All right, I've got 5:30 and I'm gonna ask Ms. Baldwin, please, to leave us in a word prayer, please.
Our kind and gracious heavenly Father God, we thank you, Lord, for this crowded room tonight, God. It's good to see people and we thank you for letting everyone come tonight, Lord. And dear Lord, we just come to you thanking you, Lord, for the blessings and answered prayers that we've had. And we pray, God, for others that in our community, in our schools, Lord, that may be sick or dealing with illness, Lord, right now. We pray, God, for your blessings upon them. We pray, God, for the decisions we have to make tonight, Lord, that you would guide us through those. Thank you again for all you do for us, your precious name, I do pray. Amen.
I'm gonna go ahead and call, that comes in, we gotta take care of something else first, I'm sorry. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And as you know, we normally elect a chair and vice chair in December. But with issues we've all been dealing with, we've kinda had to put it off. So I'm gonna open the floor up and ask for nominations for chair of the school board.
I make a motion, Ms. Ray, for chair.
A second.
Any other nominations? First of all, Ms. Ray, would you mind serving in that capacity again?
That'd be fine.
Okay, thank you. So all those in favor of Ms. Donna Ray serving as chair of the school board this school year, say aye. Those opposed? All right, Ms. Ray, I'll turn it over to you. That's her job.
Can I have a nomination for the vice chair?
Ms. Baldwin.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now we can rise for the pledge of allegiance. Jason, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to open the floor for any public comments. Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye. And at this time, I'm turning it over to Dr. Beasley for the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So we've got a few recognitions and some good news we'd like to spread tonight. So we've not been able to do that in the last few months. And so exciting to see the folks in the room tonight, and we're glad you guys are here. So I'm gonna turn it over to these two young ladies. And I'm gonna ask, would you go up to the, Ms. Carley goes?
Carley's giving a good name.
There's Carley, I'm sorry. Well, I'm not, okay, I'm sorry. Carley, I apologize. He was happy over there in the corner, so. Thank you, Carley, for coming tonight, I appreciate that.
Good evening, ACS board members and staff. I'm here to update you about a few good things that are happening at Allegheny High School. On February the 10th, at Allegheny High School, we hosted a CTE showcase for the Allegheny eighth graders. And 26 current CTE concentrators, including myself, were chosen as ambassadors to guide students around campus and tell them about our CTE courses. The eighth grade students were greeted by teachers and students in the CTE classrooms with interactive activities and information about each course offered. Ms. Daisy Finley and Ms. Dana Russell coordinated the events and were thrilled with the outcome. Eighth grade students are now more excited than ever about CTE courses. Ms. Jessica Woodso was awarded the Golden Apple for exemplary service at AHS for the month of February. Isabella Moreno was first placed in the Allegheny County ninth grade soil and water contest. And finally, Allegheny High School will be hosting a curriculum fair on Thursday, February 24th, tomorrow, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. Students and their families will have the opportunity to talk with their teachers and courses about some upcoming courses for the next year. This will give students a chance to learn about more of each course and give them more information to decide which ones they wish to take in the next upcoming school year. Thank you.
Thanks, Carley, thank you for coming tonight. And good news from Lake Creek School tonight, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Thank you so much for having us here. My name is Charles Carpenter and this is Angelica Mendoza. We'd love to share some exciting things going on at Lake Creek School. Our Environment at Lake Creek will be taking five teams to area environment on Thursday, March 24th. We are honored to be represented by most of our team from Allegheny County this year.
For our soil and water, Lake Creek experienced great success with this year's Soil and Water County Contest this year. We took home first place in county and fourth grade posters, fifth grade poster, sixth grade essay, and seventh grade speech. We took second place in county with our eighth grade speech. Our county winners include-
For our fourth grade poster, Cole St. Cross.
Our fifth grade poster, Gia Boni Lopez.
And our sixth grade essay, Haven Creed.
For our seventh grade speech, Brianna Schuberland, who will attend area competition on March 17th in Boeing Rock.
And for our eighth grade speech, Angelica Mendoza.
We are very proud of our students and their accomplishments.
For our Patriots, we had three eighth grade winners this year, with Isabella Boddy moving on to the next level in competition. And for wrestling, Alexis Mulebo, a very persistent and hardworking student, placed first in conference and third in state. He has had a wonderful season this year, our highest in growth. Our school has experienced great growth according to our mid-year RRE assessments. With our students meeting and exceeding growth, expectations in math and reading across the building.
For our RRE celebration, for PTO's summer hard work that both students and teachers put into their work, and they made a very special celebration for every PTO student with talent houses and also full courses in our town. The top growing class, which just so happens to be eighth grade, was able to get two sessions and receive some drinks and snacks to celebrate their hard work.
Our PTO organized a raffle of a donated dollhouse, which was pretty spectacular this winter. They were able to raise over $2,600. All of went straight into our classrooms to buy supplies and supplemental materials like books to beef up our classroom library and the facilities to make learning more engaging.
For spring, our PTO also brought additional fun and racing back to the spring. On March 10th, everyone has a buy-in, we pay, and our spring will be open. A hotwalled sufferer will be served, and then we'll be entertaining games for kids of all ages. We hope that this event will draw a great crowd and we know that everyone will have a great time. Our baby food is the hardest thing in recycling and possibly at PTO. With the help of their sponsors, another incentive called Daniel, where you can earn a huge increasing amount of cash and then are donating for the white house.
For our food drive, during the first weeks of November, the first grade students read the book Daddy's Fridge, which focused on how they constantly look home to an empty fridge, but soon received help once a friend made a discovery over my food. After the students read and discussed the book, collectively decided by the first grade students that providing just one can of food could help make a difference in fighting hunger. However, the students did not want to stop there and decided to make hunger recognition posters along with the video to present the entire school to help raise awareness about this issue. During the competition, Lake Creek School was able to collect over 250 cans of food along with other non-precious items that were donated to the Solid Rock Food Cause in Allegheny County.
For CTE, with the help of Gero, our CTE classes are now able to learn even more about 21st century careers and skills with our new green screens and video production of winter. And in addition, this program helped to purchase virtually all these stuffs that have allowed us to experience new places and technological advances. For Hamilton, Gero has also made it possible for our seventh to eighth grade students to visit UNC Greensboro and to see the play Hamilton. Our students and teachers are very excited to be able to participate in a once-in-a-lifetime experience. For our music and art department, receiving, received a very generous donation from Santa Sam Simmons and his wife Julia. This will allow for purchase of much-needed art supplies and musical instruments for our lower grades. For art, during Christmas, Lake Creek School art students were able to create placements for Allegheny Council on Aging Wheels on Wheels program. This was a K-8 service project. K-4 students cut out their hands and feet on construction paper to create reindeer and snowmen and glued them to white construction paper. 5th to 8th students decorate the borders of the placemats with holly berries and snowflakes with markers, gold pastels, and watercolor paints. All students enjoy creating them for the senior citizens and our community. They show great interest, empathy, and enthusiasm.
The students and staffs of GCS are all so excited to be back in the building full-time. And we're so appreciative of the opportunity to share a little bit of our good news with you this evening. Thank you so much for having your time and support.
Great job, guys. All right, do we have any of our Christmas card winners? Do what?
Transportation.
Do them first? Oh, you changed it, okay, I see. I didn't get a copy of it, I'm sorry. Before we do that, I am going to ask Jeff Johnson, our transportation director, to give a little bit of news about transportation.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Beasley. Thank you, guys, for having me this evening. I just wanna share with you guys what we do, of all the time, what we do behind the scenes. Nobody knows, nobody sees, but it's equally important to save transportation of these kids. Normal law requires every single YAL bus in the state have a 72-point inspection every 30 days, or it's not legal for that bus to transport children to and from the school. Each year, we get an audit from DPI, they come around doing inspection, and they actually come in, spend the day with us, go through our files, go through all our bus reports, and actually get under the bus and inspect three buses. Last year, with COVID and all, everything's operating a little bit behind, but we scored 6.6 and that made us number one in the whole state. First time we've done it. But it's quite an accomplishment for us. When we got through these buses, you know, we do our inspections. And you know, each bus has, if it finds a defect, it'll have a certain grade that it defects your score. So like anything pertaining to brakes or batteries, you know, that's 50 points at parks of us, and that'll kill our score. So actually, the lower our score is, the better we are. So you know, 6.6 is really, really great. And various things we get inspected on is cleanliness, the maintenance of the bus. And this year, we already had our score, and this year, we scored a 3.0. So we cut last year's score in half. So hopefully, we may end up being number one in the state again. But also tonight, I'd like to bring attention to everybody about a little guy that come to us a couple years ago. Ms. Baldwin, they gave me a call about a guy that was just over infatuated with school buses. And you know, I've always been open to giving people chances. And we was a little bit skeptical at first, but you know, when we got this guy to come to us and spend some time with him, he's just amazing, what he does. For us, that allows Noel to do more things that pertains to mechanical work. He's really precise on cleaning the bus, we can get one in there, he's excellent on doing seat work. Just an absolute perfect fit for what we do. And I want him to know tonight how important that he is to our success. And that's why we called him in here tonight, and we also got his mother here. And I talked to Dr. Beasley and Sharon about bringing this special recognition to him. And I just want him to know that how great, Devin, we are to have you as part of our team. So Mr. Devin Caldwell, would you mind coming up?
Go up here, Devin, please. Devin, I remember when you came a couple years ago. You're still quiet and shy, but you opened up a little bit, but a little bit, a little bit, there you go. But we got a little plaque for you tonight, and we wanna recognize the job you've been doing, and we appreciate everything you do. It says, "In recognition for outstanding service and dedication to helping keep the buses clean and safe for Allegheny County Schools." And we're gonna present this to Devin Caldwell, 2021. Devin, thank you so much. And while I'm up here, thanks, Jeff, for all you guys do. Noel, Shonda, that's the bus garage, that's- So they keep all our buses rolling, they keep our routes rolling, keep the buses going clean, drivers, best we can. These guys jump in, drive buses when we need them to, when they can, buses keeping fuel. We couldn't do it without you guys. And a big accomplishment for being number one in the state. And I got a good feeling you guys will be there again this year, I know, with that inspection ramp, yeah. But we just wanna say thank you for all you do.
Just wanna share another thing too. Some of y'all may have remembered, back four or five years ago, Volkswagen Cup was getting some trouble on cheating on diesel emissions. A lot of you guys may not understand all of that, but basically what they were doing was they was programming the cars to pass emissions tests in emission states whenever they hooked up to it, but when they unflood from it, that's how they can get 50 miles to a gallon out of a Volkswagen diesel car. Well, anyway, California called them and it got real tense. Long story short, EPA fined Volkswagen multi-billion dollars. And in that settlement, the EPA got to allocate the money out to the states. And we got to submit grants to get some older, underperforming buses replaced. And it only pertained to YAL buses, which is owned by the state, not the county buses. So I talked to Noel, you know, we had two buses that fell into that group. One of them had over 200,000 miles, which we felt certain that we would get replaced. The other one had like 180. And a lot of the counties, believe it or not, they need to submit paperwork to do it. And all you have to do is sit down and do the paperwork. So we got notified the occasion that we got both of ours replaced. So that's about over $180,000 savings to our county and our state. And we got two buses, and they both are in now, both are in service. But you know, I wanna say special thanks to Noel and Shanda for what they do and how they support me. We all get along, we have the best group of drivers, I think, in the 16 years that I've been here now. We all understand each other, and that can be tough at times. And we know we're kind of been going through all that we've come through. We've got a lot of those 3:00 a.m. phone calls, you know, what do I do? I'm sure everybody in here has experienced that. But you know, nowadays, when you build a mechanic, you can't just build a mechanic. These buses have got ten onboard computers, not including the cameras. And you know, the diesel particulate filter system's on, it'll operate at over 1,800 degrees. And there's a lot of hazards, a lot of the public don't ever know about, that we have to keep up with. And I've got four laptop computers that I have just to talk to buses to work on because of the variations in running here. But that's kinda all I got, and I say thank y'all very much. And I've been doing this stuff for right at 40 years. I started working on daddy's farm equipment. My daddy had less than desirable education, and he'd run something till it broke, and then he worked on it, because that's all he owed. But in my years of mechanic, I've not ever been in a garage where I have everything that I physically need to do my job. When we sat down to do our budget request for this year that they're going through now, we really had a hard time finding what we needed. So we decided just to put in, ask for an addition on our garage, and I think that's reflective of our score. And so everything everybody's done to give us the equipment that we need, I simply say thank you. That's all I have, guys.
Thanks, guys. So I'll get back on track now. So we're on our number four, Christmas card winners. Do we have any of our Christmas card winners? Ooh, okay, let me find your certificates. Angelica, right? Angelica, all right, Angelica. So we, yeah, Christmas is over, but we're still celebrating, so anyway. He's gonna take your picture, so I'm gonna bring you up here, okay? So I'll move this out later. But so we, this year, we had Christmas card winners from all four schools. And this young lady was our overall winner. Here's a picture of her Christmas card. And just beautiful, I thought it really represented Allegheny County. Fantastic, especially with the Christmas tree and stuff. But so Angelica Mendoza, this is a little certificate for your participation in winning. And then we've got a little $25 gift card subway for you on the back back there, so congratulations. You guys did a great job. And I don't, I haven't seen, is Sherry out there? I haven't seen her, she's not, okay, she's not able to come. So Sherry, we wanted to recognize Sherry. Okay, so I'll show you, but Sherry wasn't able to be here. But these are some of the placemats that Sherry did for the senior center down there. So we wanted to recognize all the work that was done by Glade and the students there and the placemats that they put together. So hopefully, maybe she can be at our next meeting, okay, we'll try again.
I think that was 87.
I think, yeah, I knew it was-
They did really, they were beautiful.
Yeah, yeah.
The seniors really loved them.
Well, that's great.
I have placemats from a long time ago.
Do your head for-
And I still dig those out and they look awesome. Every Christmas, they come out, so I love those placemats.
And so we did wanna recognize Sherry, and we wanted to recognize the Bright Idea Grant winners, but none of those guys are here. So let's try to bring those back next meeting and make a point to touch base individually with them, okay? And we'll get them here. So next on my list is a young lady from the high school. That some of you may know, some of you may not know, but Lexi Tornador. I'm coming the other way, so you just stay still. And I'm gonna read just a little bit, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Bell to come up, okay? That's all right. But for those of you who don't know, come stand right here, Lexi. This is Lexi Tornador, she is our new band director. And she was hired about three years ago. And as you know, our band numbers have been low, they're still a little low. But we're starting to get a lot more support. And the school board supported with $10,000 for some new equipment and uniforms. The symphony gave a nice donation. And you know, we are really proud of the work that Lexi's doing. She just competed in the Rose Bowl, I said, that you performed in the Rose Bowl out of California. And so we wanted to maybe, if you wanna talk a little bit about that. But before that, I'm gonna tell us a little bit about your Rose Bowl training, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Bell to come up, so.
So for those of you who don't know, on New Year's Day, I performed in the Rose Parade in Pasadena, California. I was part of the Saluting America's Band Directors Marching Band. And we were actually the first marching band and float combo in the 113 years that the parade had been going on. So we had a float to accompany our 300-person band. And the band was all band directors from all over the country. I was one of two band directors from North Carolina. So we had only gotten together like three days before the parade to play together. We had practiced for about a year before that. And it was a very surreal experience, you know, just hearing us play for the first time. It was really, I've never been a part of a big band like that, and it was amazing, you know, walking down that parade route with tons and tons of spectators. It was a little nerve-wracking, but it was really, really cool. It was a great experience.
I think it's a huge honor. You were selected from Allegheny County, and I don't know if you know, but you were on Channel 12 for about two weeks. But we do have, I have a young lady here tonight that would like to present a little something to you and the band program as we continue to try to build this program. So this is Ms. Karen Bell, I'll turn it over to Ms. Bell.
Hi, I'm Karen Bell, and I'm with the Allegheny County Symphony Committee, along with Dr. Suzanne Irwin, Unalind, Jane Wyatt, Frances Huber, and Rita Woodruff. Over three years ago, Lexi Tornador was a new hire. She walked into a band program that had few working instruments, no storage cabinets, and no band uniforms. Now endowed with $10,000 from the school board and $25,000 from the symphony committee, the high school band program has uniforms, sheet music, new and repaired instruments, and cabinetry to store the instruments safely. Ms. Tornador has turned the high school band program around, even putting on the Christmas concert in December the first in several years. Due to being a good steward of the funds entrusted to her thus far, the symphony committee wishes to bestow Ms. Tornador with $16,000. Her eyes lit up. To work her magic on the middle school band programs as well. So let me start at that. This is just a card, this is the shaker envelope. You know, somebody's gonna have to buy it.
One, two, three.
Just wanting to learn a bit more here. The timing of this award is crucial. Now, this school board meeting was supposed to be in early February, it got moved. So they've already had middle school registration for classes that ended Friday a few days ago. So the timing's a little tricky, and I really hope the school principals at the middle schools will work with this situation a little bit. This past semester, only one student registered for band at Lake Creek School. This is the decision students make when they have to buy or rent their own instruments. The symphony committee hopes this award will be enough to protect the future of the band program in Allegheny County. However, if not, we hope the board and other community organizations will bridge the funding gap so our community has a healthy, active, and growing music program once again. Thank you for all you do.
Lexi, congratulations. I appreciate everything you're doing for our students, and I owe these funds for your help. And thank you so much to the symphony committee, you guys have been wonderful.
Thank you.
I know we haven't been able to get the symphony up here like we were before, but this is really a nice connection. So we appreciate you guys, thank you so much. You guys wanna sneak out?
Yeah, we're gonna sneak out. Wait, Charles, can I go?
All right. You can go, yeah. Yeah, hi, Lexi, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna turn it over to Courtney Bennett, just to discuss a few minutes about it's scholarship season. So she just kinda wants to tell you some procedures that have in place and things that are going on good at the high school, so. You can move it wherever you need to, Courtney.
Okay, so first of all, thanks for having me. I was asked to come to give you an overview of our scholarship process with the Head Foundation and kind of how we're collaborating and working together to make that process better for our seniors. But first, I want to let you all know how much our Student Services Department has really worked hard this year on this process. We've had several changes in the past few months, and we've overcome those challenges. And we've been able to collaborate with the seniors and the senior parents. And I think we've done a really good job with ensuring that all of our students are getting the information and the support that they need. So I'm gonna go back to when this process started. We actually started our scholarship process in August. We started with having one-on-one meetings with each one of our seniors. So we have currently 80- So, we have currently 85 seniors, so that meant meeting with every senior to discuss their post-secondary plans. And from those meetings, we determined how, as the Student Services, how we would, um, support those students, because everyone has a different plan. And from there, we began the actual scholarship application process through the Ed Foundation. That scholarship is found on their Allegheny Education Foundation website. The students were given a due date of December 18th, and they were, um, probably sick of hearing my voice and seeing my emails come across their computer screens. But I inundated them with daily announcements at high school, social media, connected calls at home. Um, like I said, emails to, um, the students. And that was to ensure that, that they had every opportunity to know as much as they can know about the scholarship opportunity. And then, we had that deadline of December 18th. We came back from Christmas, and of course, we still have students who have not, uh, applied. So, we did go ahead and send a letter home to the parents to let them know of the opportunity. Um, once that was done, we currently have 61 seniors who has completed that application. So, we're looking at about 72% completion. I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied with that. No, it's not 100%, but 100% of our kids don't go to college after high school, and that's okay. Um, we have to support the ones that are with this pathway, and we support the ones in another pathway. Um, actually, I have received, uh, a few phone calls this week. I've had three students come to me, uh, this week to say, "I got your letter, my parents got that letter, and I'm gonna be filling out that application." So, I'm hoping that number's gonna increase a little bit before the end of the year. So, um, and I've, I've got up here that the ones that haven't, of course, are military bound, weren't bound, or have not decided on, um, plans after high school. We do have several early grads, and, um, one of those early grad is military bound, and then we've got two that are military bound after. So, they, of course, would not apply for the scholarship. Um, the final, last most deadline is going to be March 31st. So, we're still working with these seniors, trying to get, um, as many of them to apply as possible. And of course, each application, some of them require different, um, documentation. So, I'm now pulling each student, each application, and making sure that all the documents that are required is attached to that application. So, a couple of things that we're doing different this year. Um, the first one is that we are going to be having a committee at our high school of five to seven faculty members that will help, um, ensure that every student's qualified for the, um, certain scholarship that they've applied for, and also make recommendations to ensure that each student, um, is receiving an equal opportunity. Um, we are looking at five to seven faculties from different departments. So, for the students that aren't CTE students, that are academic students, we're gonna pull from every department to ensure that all teachers have a voice in it as well. And then, that's what will be distributed to the Ed Foundation on March 31st. And, um, from there, we have learned that the Ed Foundation is also going to have a review committee. This is, um, to ensure that they are in compliance with our S guidelines. They have asked us to provide them with two faculty members. I've got those listed up here, Ms. Jenny Cook and Mr. Paisley. And then, there will be two community members, that's to be determined. And we will have one, or they will have one, um, foundation member on that board, and that is Mr. Warren Taylor. So, that is, that will be the final process. Um, it's hard to believe that we're almost to that, that scholarship assembly. Um, we have not determined that, that deadline yet, or that assembly date will wait on, anymore snow. Um, but that's kind of what we've done this year. Uh, I'm pleased with how it's worked out. Of course, we can make improvements, and we will next year. But I think we've got a good process going, and I hope that we can continue to increase that, that number of, um, students that have applied. Um, so, sorry, something really quickly. Um, the, the five to seven faculty, uh, committee, they will, so, I'm kinda going back. There are certain scholarships that the donors ask the high school to select their recipient. And so, that is what that five to seven committee will, will really help do. Um, so, any of the donors who want to choose their applicant, they will do that, and we will provide that information for them. So, the five to seven, um, faculty members at the high school, they will be the ones selecting the, um, recipients who they just want us to make those recommendations.
I think it sounds great. Thank you very much, Ms. Dean.
I agree.
Very much.
Anybody got any other questions? Courtney's been working hard, I, I will say that.
It's, it has been improved greatly, improved greatly. Maybe this is the time to, uh, there's been new, the foundation itself, um, has a new direction, and they are thrilled that Courtney has really come to, you know, risen to this cause. And I, I think that, you know, we say, "Well, we're giving students time." You really have to do that. These are good people. And they're just beginning, in a sense, and some parents don't realize what, what is happening here.
A lot of parents don't realize.
Like, to John Woodruff, um, scholarships, if you apply, and Courtney, help me, if you apply, you can be guaranteed almost that you would get $1,000 to help you. Am I right, Travis?
Yes, I think so.
Now, you know, that's, that's wonderful. Uh, so, I applaud you, and, uh, will, I am on the board, and I would do anything that we, we will do anything to ensure that this continues like this.
I think this is a good process.
It is.
I like it.
So, you've got, it says 61 seniors that have done the, complete the general application, but does that include some of the, the?
It's not.
Including the individual.
We probably have another 25 roughly specialties, and that just means that there's a, a donor who has a specific application.
Right.
Yes, and stuff like it.
Yeah, so, um, I don't have those totals, but, um, I would say roughly 50 to 75 additional applications on top of the 61. Now, granted, these are the same students, you know, they've applied for multiple scholarships. Yeah. So, and we did try to, um, update the general scholarship and make it as easy and simple for the students. Um, because that's, that's a bear. They, they open up the scholarship, and it's 20 pages long, and they automatically close it out. So, we did update the general scholarship this year. It's very simple. Um, it shouldn't take them more than 10 to 15 minutes to complete, and I think that's a big difference.
And it includes the Hispanic.
So, um, we have, um, been able to support that population, uh, just the same. Um, we actually have not ran into any, um, I guess, language barriers. And they are, some of them are a little bit more apprehensive, but we have, um, support locally that, the, the call, the community college helps with that. And, so, we've, we've, we've been fine with that.
Excellent, excellent.
Uh, and I will say the, uh, so, if you don't know, the Ed Foundation has had some recent donors to give money, and, and the, uh, foundation amount is a little over $8 million now. So, uh, as a board, we went in and have, have raised our percentage as to giving funds out and develop some other procedures. And so, uh, uh, it's, moving forward, I'm, I'm excited about it, and, you know, and that scholarship review committee is all it is, is committee. They're not choosing any scholarships. Uh, it's just to make, it's just, with an $8 million fund balance, uh, we have to make sure the R S laws are being in compliance. And so, that's, that's what that, that's what that review committee is. It's not a selection committee, it's a review committee. So, I just wanna, if there's any misunderstandings about that. You're talking about the Ed Foundation Committee. Yeah, the Ed Foundation Committee is, it, there, there's not a. Right. That's not who's selecting scholarships, so, but.
It gives.
It gives, that's right, it is. Courtney, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate everything you guys are doing up there. And next on my agenda is, uh, Mr. Travis Sturgill, principal at the high school, and they've got some, uh, another proposal, they'd like to talk about the dress code, and maybe some adjustments that might be made on it.
First of all, I would just like to say, I can't say enough about the Student Services team at the high school. They have done a fantastic job. They're a great group, and, uh, it's been a joy to work with them this year on this process, and as well as other things that are happening up there, so, it's just gonna be a little girl, so. Uh, so, I am here to talk a little bit about the dress code. I have with me Hazel Paisley and Phoebe Murphy. They're gonna sort of go through this line by line, and so, you can get a better understanding of what we're looking at. The emphasis for this, this change is, is we found that, you know, we talked to a lot of, of parents and a lot of students, and they can't find clothes that fit the old guidelines, because they're, they are old. We've had these dress code guidelines for, for many, many years. And, uh, things have changed quite a bit, and we just felt like it was time to, uh, update, uh, the. So, you should have in your packet, I hope, here, one that has red in it, and then one that has just the black. The black is the, the current dress code as is. And then, the, the one with the red, these are our proposed changes to that dress code. So, you can sort of see where we're at now and where we're, we're going. And I want to emphasize that this is, this is just sort of a jumping off place here. Uh, these are recommendations, of course, they're, they're up for debate, they're up for change. Uh, but we wanted to present these to you and, uh, see what you think there. So, with that, I'm handing it over to you guys, and, and you would just maybe go through, uh, each one of these guidelines and talk about why the changes were made, and, uh, I would like to say that these guys are part of student council, and they had two or three open forms, so that we got input from a lot of students at the high school. And this is pretty much their recommendations. Uh, these are coming from the, uh, students themselves, and we run this by the sit team. They did this, what they're gonna do for you today for our sit team, and we loved it. And we felt like they made some really good, responsible choices, and with that.
Well, first of all, I just thank you guys so much for being open enough to hear us. It, it means a lot for our voices to be heard, and thank you for having us here. Um, well, the first thing that I wanted, we wanted to direct your attention to was in the introduction. Uh, one of the main issues was an inconsistency of enforcement. So, to address that, if you, if you don't mind, maybe make a note beside it, because we wanted to change the wording a little bit, by the, um, if any staff member perceives. We thought that if it was up to the opinion of the staff members, that leads to the inconsistency. So, we, we thought we'd make a suggestion where if someone gets in trouble for violating the dress code, the teacher has to specify which rule they broke. And the, the kids, they base, that they would base their outfits on the code, so they can't possibly know they're breaking a rule if it's not in there. So, we just suggest that people only get punished for rules that are in the code.
And if you look at the violations on, on the backside, number B, uh, it does, it does state that the student will be reminded of the appropriate dress code and informed of the specific guideline being addressed. So, we're gonna, you know, to specifically what guideline and why that guideline does not fit with our S code.
And then, um, and then there at the bottom of the introduction, there's a phrase talking about exceptions for athletics. And we just wanted to make sure that if there was an exception for one type of athletics, that there would be exceptions for the other. Because a, a lot of sports, it's hard to, it's hard to abide by, such as swimming.
Okay, so, starting off with the guidelines, first, we have, um, number one, shorts, skirts, and dresses should be no shorter than the length of individuals' shrugged fingertips, including those worn over leggings and applies to slits in dresses and skirts and jeans with holes. Holes showing skin should be no higher than the bottom of the length of the individual's shrugged fingertips. So, before, I don't know if you remember, but it's three inches from the top of the knee, and I don't really know how much three inches is. That's like, that's really long. I, I don't know how to find shorts that long. So, instead, uh, you can see my fingertips are still pretty long, and if you shrug your shoulders, that's still, I think that's still reasonable. And we think that, that would be much easier to find shorts, and I honestly think that's still appropriate. So, that's what we proposed for number one.
Um, so, for number two, uh, we wrote that all shirts or dresses must have shoulder straps measuring no less than three fingers wide, unless continually worn under the top that has sleeves. And if they're worn under the top, then you don't really know that it's, it's less than that anyway. Um, and then, they also say that armholes should not extend more than three fingers below the armpit. We thought three was an easy number to keep up with, you know? Um, so, the three fingers below the armpit is here, because you'll get, you'll get a lot, a lot of times, you get the side of the body, which is, it could be distracting.
And that, that addresses the males a lot. They like to wear the, the long skirt that go all the way down. I'm not sure exactly what they're talking about.
Muscle shirts.
Muscle shirts. Never wore muscle shirts, Mr. Sturgill.
But, I tell you, I've learned a lot about, candy, now I know what a candy was. I do now. There's all sorts of these terms, but I said, oh, I'm gonna take them.
Okay, and number three, pre-scholarship, all students must wear shirts and tops at all times. All tops should be long enough to cover the midriff when sitting or standing. And shirts, tops, and dresses must cover the back and chest area, measured both back and front in a straight line from armpit to armpit. So, we thought that to cover like, it's like swooping shirts and stuff, instead of measuring just armpit to armpit, a straight line across, and that would be on the back too, which pretty much, I mean, that covers everything that should be covered, and.
And again, I think that, that first part of that covers the guys who maybe want to take their shirt off or something.
That's all, that is why we, I, I forget.
Alright, so then, number four, undergarments, um, and then the, the parentheses is what we added. So, for example, bras and/or male and female underpants should not be visible whether sitting or standing.
Number five, outer clothing should not be, um, should not be sheer, meshed, or designed in such a manner as to reveal the body or undergarments as described above, so.
So, yeah. Yeah, we just don't, yeah, you just cover the, the parts that should be covered with each of the rules.
And that, that did, um, I think we mixed five and six together from the old rulebook, and that said clothing is not to be sheer, meshed, or have holes higher than the mid-thigh. And since we changed the rule about holes and shorts, we changed, we just took that part out, so it's like the three fingertip as well.
So, we, so for, for number six, um, it's, it was, it's kind of a tough one. But, but we decided on oversized clothing, such as pants that sag below the hip bone, which would cover the undergarments issue, or shirts that hang off the shoulder exposing undergarments are not allowed.
Yeah, before, it said oversized clothing, more overly tight-fitting clothing, and we thought that went back to opinion-based. Like, if one teacher thought something was too tight, that would, um, you know, leave it up for, like, some teachers might not prosecute you for that, and some would. So, we just took that out.
There are a lot of, you know, females now that wear, I don't know, leggings, okay? Another term is that wear leggings that are extremely tight. And it's, it's pretty common. Uh, I just don't feel like if we tried to stop that, we would go into revolt.
And also, it's, it's leggings are much more affordable than pants, and so, it is harder than I feel like that.
So, we just thought to take out the over. Number seven, we did not choose to change that because attire is not allowed which promotes alcoholic beverages, tobacco, use of controlled substances, depicts violence, is of a sexual nature, is gang-related, is core-related, is of a disruptive nature, or is demanding or degrading to a particular group or individual. This includes, but is not limited to jewelry, bandanas, t-shirts, ETC. We did not change that, but called everything in there is reasonable, it made sense.
And then, number eight, appropriate footwear should be worn at all times, and, and it, it, it was just that in the old one, but we decided to, um, expand a little bit on it, just, just saying, like, for example, boots in ag class or gym shoes in P E, and emphasize that all students need to wear at least some form of shoe at school at all times.
Um, number nine, belt when worn must be buckled properly and worn at the waistline.
Yeah, we did, we did. It seemed kind of self-explanatory.
Makes sense, we're both.
Um, and we also didn't, wait, did we change?
No.
No, we also didn't change 10. Um, yeah, because, because we think it's a respect thing.
And approved by administration. Some teachers allow hats and some don't, so, I mean, it's up to your teacher. I think you're in the ag building, you know?
Pretty much in the office where one friend.
And, and all students understand that that's just a respect thing, literally.
Um, 11, no accessories that could be perceived as dangerous. Eleven, no accessories that could be perceived as dangerous to others will be allowed. Spiked collars, spiked bracelets and chains, that has become a little bit of an issue at the high school. And so we just added that in there. Because that has been seen more.
Yeah, I was mentioning multiple times before. So I would, I would like to maybe add a suggestion of a particular material. Like, plastic things probably couldn't hurt people, but, but like if they're made out of metal, then it probably is an issue.
Some clothes made out of metal.
Made out of metal, yeah.
Missed spots.
But yeah, because like the spikes made out of plastic, they aren't, they are, they can be a fashion statement and aren't harmful. So.
There are some made of which you could.
Yeah.
I think, I think what we're seeing mostly right now are just really short shorts and the midriff showing. That's, that's two things that we're sort of battling right at the moment.
And we did not think to put, like, we think we needed to put anything in about the midriff because honestly, there are a ton of places for those things. And we thought it would be too hard to bring a blood truck and force evenly, you know, and to force appropriately. So we just added that shirts had to cover the midriff.
But if you guys want to make a rule about the midriff, feel free to. Because I know a lot of the girls would appreciate it if they could wear crop tops. But we didn't know what's coming up with.
I would just call it, interrupt with that. Because I'm, and I'm very old fashioned, very old fashioned. So, yes, that would have to be addressed. Because just for me coming up there a couple of times a day, dropping off and picking up, it's not appropriate.
They do it, they have it dressed.
That it's completely covered.
Yes, people, they have it dressed.
Uh, number, number two.
Okay. Yeah, that has to be covered because it's, it's, it's not as of right now.
Yeah, and three, you covered.
Yeah, all tops should be long enough to cover the midriff when sitting or standing.
Right.
And that's like, there was a time and it was like you reached up to scan your temperature and people would, the dress code for like your shirt coming up when you do that. So we added that you just stand, like you don't have to raise your arms or anything because, you know, don't walk around, you know, like waving your arms up. But just like it, like this, like just standing, this is not showing the midriff. So that would be considered appropriate.
That is appropriate.
And we do have a lot of.
If she reaches it.
Well, if she reaches it, it's still not, it's not. It's code.
We do have a lot, you know, they, they will come in normal. And then they will tuck to raise the bottom of the shirt. So it's, it's things that, that, like that, that you see or you're aware of. They'll have a, you know, a coat jacket on that covers everything. And then you get the platform and they have on crop tops. So it's those types of things we're trying to address.
And we do, we do address, we do mention that and they're like consistently worn over the, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because I, I, here's where, I, I go, like, okay, no shorter than the length of the individual's shrugged fingertips. Well, who's gonna determine the shrug? I know, I know that that's a silly question, but if, if I stand up and shrug like this, look where the fingertips are, that's.
We did, we did think, I think even at that point, we thought that it would be okay because it does cover the parts that you want covered.
I feel like if you, I mean, if you shrug enough, it could be. But I think that would also, like if you, if you think the shorts are too short like that, then I think the administrator would just like say, no, that's too short.
I just want it to be so consistent that students come in and they know, I'm not gonna attempt to wear this outfit today. This is not appropriate school. School's a place for education. It's not a fashion thing. I don't want.
I think that's where our important will come in. I mean, if we're consistent with that and, and we, we catch that every day, I think we'll, we'll stop that pretty quickly.
Maybe we could add something where it doesn't go over the ears or something, just.
You know, it's, how, how high can you shrug them?
Yeah, hey, I can shrug really high. And I'm just, I'm saying.
I think that the point with the shrugging is that everybody's body's a little bit different. And that, you know, by shrugging, everybody has the same opportunity to, to maybe cover the same amount.
Because honestly, I think my arms are pretty long. The way they're just.
Yeah, they are. You didn't shrug at all.
No, this is no shrug. So I think that is, that is still very.
No way you find shirts like that.
That's, that's the point. I mean, how can you can't find shorts that long?
Yeah, we thought, we thought with the, I do, I do understand where you, people will bend. And I know people who will try to bend it. If we could come up with something, if you guys could come up with a suggestion a little more consistent, we, we'd be.
They will still try to bend it. It doesn't matter.
And I, I would say if we are very consistent to say, here's the punishment, here's, here's what we're gonna do.
We have to leave it up to them.
Exactly. Then students will start saying, I'm not even gonna attempt to put that on today.
But you in here, you have the like, a mid like first offense.
And we're gonna hand this out and they're going to read this over. And they're gonna sign that they have read it and understand. And we're also, we're also thinking about possibly having like a QR tablet on the wall with some examples of what is appropriate.
And the rest of the dress code.
Right, and, and I just want to say, you know, we have young ladies and, and men up there that are going, our, as educators, we want them to be ready for the workforce, for job interviews. And so I think we should instill in them to dress appropriately and, and, you know, I.
I agree. It is a, it's a real, it's a tough subject. It really is. It is hard for us because a lot of times, some of these perceptions are in the eyes of the beholder. I mean, it's what might be, one teacher might see as appropriate, another might see as inappropriate. But that's why you want to have some, some strict guidelines.
Yeah, we're all with you on that, yeah.
But, you know, if you do this and, you know, it doesn't cover, then.
Right.
You know, we don't want to get into measuring, I don't think. You know.
Yeah, I think, I think if we say regularly shrugged, I think that, I, I just don't know of a better suggestion, honestly. We've, we've racked our brains on it, you know, we've done like three inches fingertip and, and it's, it's just really tough. And, I mean, it's just really hard to find shorts that are this long.
And the reason we did the shrug instead of measuring is because of, you know, like we're all different. And usually people's arms to legs are more proportionate than just like putting a ruler. So that's why we came up with that idea, instead of just like measuring.
Yeah.
Also, like, going back to like what to do, if you get dress coded for the first offense, it's a warning and the student changes the clothes using available clothes at school or calls the parent and guardian to bring and change the clothes. And if neither of those are available, then the student will spend the day in isolation. And parents will be notified. And then the second offense is warning and student changes clothes, you know, the same thing. And then, parent must be notified that the dress code policy has been violated and the next offense will result in ISS. So we're, we're trying to make it, you know, stricter.
Yeah, the, the old, I saw on here, but the old violations for the offenses have about six warnings. I think that's way too many. We don't need to be warned at six times. That's, that's crazy to me.
It's a very sensitive thing to learn about.
Yeah, so we, we've got to start, you know, going to this, you know, if they get down to the third offense, we're on the department handbook that states that, you know, non-compliance with directives from principal, teacher, and other school personnel. So then we can start, you know, going down that list of discipline. But we thought two warnings was, was sufficient. And even the, the second one involving ISS placement, we, we, again, that's all up for debate there as well. We could do two warnings completely and then follow into the, the non-directive, non-compliance with directives. If you wanted to, you know, we could do that.
What I like about it is they're holding themselves accountable.
Yep.
They done it.
Yep.
They know if they break the rules, they're the ones that broke it. They know the rules. I like, I like that they've made and helped with it.
This input has, has been, you know, from, like, you had it, it's two.
Yeah, we had two.
Forums, correct? Where students could get their input. And, and this is sort of a combination of that. With approval from our school improvement team. But again, we're, we're up to changes.
Yeah, we are.
If you see something that, that we can do that would be better, we're all for that.
And then, right at the end there, we, we added a, well, they, actually the school improvement team added the signatures so that people read it and know what the rules are. And then we thought we would also maybe have like lists, like the lists of the code around the school, maybe as a QR code or just so that they know what's up there, you know? Because I think a lot of people don't even know what's in the code.
As soon as I saw the code posted on Facebook, like at the beginning of the school year, I obviously didn't even read it because it looked so long. And I think we like, we condensed it a little bit. We made it, I think we, I guess.
I think you guys have done a fantastic job on it. You put a lot of work and effort into it. And I like the, I like the idea of the QR code being posted up or the rules posted. And accountability to the parents and students, I don't know, for it.
Yeah, and like Mr. Carter said, it can even have examples, like little graphics that people are shrugging their shoulders, just appropriate.
We're not gonna show the inappropriate stuff, but everything is.
Yeah, right.
You know, that's, that's my point.
Don't show their shoulders up other than.
Yeah, I really, sorry, I, I know, we like, we need, we need that kind of input, for sure.
And it's gotta be a consistency with the staff.
Yeah.
That's where it'll all come down to. It'll come down to the staff, anyway. But like I said, they're holding themselves accountable and I do appreciate that.
Yeah, you guys done it. School improvement team's been part of it and so.
The only other thing I, I might add, we, we talked about the spandex pants. And, and I'll, I'll be honest, I, I wear them like every day because I, I run. But, you know, if, if we had, instead of the shorter shirts, if, if we could maybe put in there to wear shirts that kind of, I mean, I know you're not gonna wear a shirt down here, but.
That come down a little bit.
A little bit longer.
At the waistline, yeah.
We, we do have a few students who like to wear these real long sweatshirts. And with shorts underneath, but you can't see the shorts underneath.
So it's like a sweatshirt dress.
I mean, we, we can dress that for sure.
I mean, that would probably, it faces, so covers everything.
But, but again, that could be one of the items that say you cannot wear shirts that cover, that go below your shorts.
Yeah, yeah.
That could be a.
Like shorts, I think we have it here. I think, doesn't it say shorts must be visible or?
I think so.
If it does, that would cover that.
I don't, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how big of an issue it is, as long as it's covering what we determined needs to be covered of the legs. Yeah, as long as the.
As long as it goes down far enough.
Yeah, as long as it goes down far enough, then.
I don't, said that or do we talk? I don't know.
This is the core of it. I have a recommendation.
Yeah.
I would like to discuss this during closed session before we vote on it in an open session.
We're not voting on it tonight. No, they've, all they've done is brought a presentation to you. This, but what they're wanting to do is.
Get your input.
Get your input from you, okay? And, because this is part of the handbook. And so when you guys approve the handbook, is when you'll be approving the dress code, okay?
Does this qualify for closed session?
No, it does not.
Well, this needed to be done. I do think the long shirts that cover the shorts is very inappropriate. I think that needs to be addressed.
We can address that, for sure.
That's, that's why they want to bring it to discuss. If you got, if you got suggestions.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't want suggestions tonight unless you have them. But you think about it, you know, for a month or so and we can, you can come back.
We won't, we won't, we won't vote on the handbook with this policy in it or this procedure. It's not really necessary policy. But we won't vote on that until July, maybe? June, July, tomorrow? June, yeah.
So right now, you're going by this policy?
You have to go by, you have to go by the old policy.
We're going by our policy, but we're taking a little liberty where it says, in the opinion of the principal, head of our designated. So if it disrupts, if we feel like it disrupts the learning environment or constitutes health, a threat to health or safety, provocative or obscene or lack of compliance, we'll take, you know, we have a little bit more liberty with that statement. So we're able to maybe, you know, look at some of these issues where they're going down to over the midriff they show and holes in pants. Those are, like I say, some of the things that we're seeing quite a bit right now that we're trying to address. The word has gotten out that the three fingers are applied to the midriff. Now that word's gotten out, but, so we're hearing that and I said, nope, that's not.
Because that's what a lot of people brought up in the forums.
That, no, that's, yeah, that's what we had discussion with.
And I think they thought that because they brought it up, that we put it in here. But we just thought that was not really appropriate and it was really inappropriate. So we did not put that.
So if you got suggestions, I mean, you can share them with me and I'll share them with Travis. Or you guys can call Travis, I mean, that's.
Email, email or call.
Yeah.
Thank you all for doing this.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate it.
I appreciate it very much.
Yes, you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
You did, sorry, I kept questioning you. No, it's good.
That's what we wanted.
Yeah. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah. You can take your shirt and do one of these. That's why I said that. Is she coming here for the same or for the harvest?
I, I moved back.
It was kinda open. Mr. Carter, updates?
Good evening. I've just got a few updates for you and a few things to go over here. First of all, maintenance wise, we have our roof bidding beginning at Glade Creek. The initial bids are coming in in March and we're getting that ready hopefully to start as soon as we end the school year. The other big project is HVAC installation at Sparta and it is ready to go. We're just waiting, they're trying to get some dry days so they can get the concrete pad poured to get that started. We waited until the end of the middle school season to do that. So hopefully both of those things are getting off the ground here pretty soon. The next thing is the athletic renovation. We had a, received in the budget $2.25 million for our athletic facilities and renovation. And we had a committee meeting on 2/14 to discuss and approve the projects. And we have a list of those up here. I know the ones that are on the committee have seen them. The committee, we got together, we tried to weigh, you know, what could we serve the most students with? Got trouble? What could we serve the most students with? How we could make our, everything compliant and safe? And, and looked at it, we were looking at things $25,000 and more capital projects and hopefully get our system and our facilities in place where they are good for a long, long time. We took into account Title IX issues, OCR issues, all those things to, to come to that decision. And it was a very good group. We had, we had a couple of school board members. We had female coaches, we had male coaches, we had ADs, we had principals. And we had some community people who had coached at the school for a number of years. So we kind of had the, we had the veteran leadership, the current leadership and future leadership. That was all represented in that, in that meeting. And like I said, everything went well. We have, we've got to the point where we have made contact with several different, of course, these, these jobs will be bid out. And we'll try to get the best prices we can and, and get the best product we can as well to begin those things. And what we plan to do, if, if there's no objection, is we would like to proceed and get some engineered drawings. Because our, all of our projects, the big ones, are, that involve construction, are gonna have to have drawings. If we can get these drawings in place as the bidding is taking place, then the people who get the bids, they can begin work as, as soon as that happens. So that's, that's the process we're at and that's what like, what we would like to get started.
No, I don't think your Google Doc was shared, but.
It's not coming up.
Yeah. But as Mr. Carter said.
We talk, not email.
Okay, so the engineered drawings that Mr. Carter's talking about, you have to have those for basically capital and construction projects on campus. And so the, I, I'm just gonna make a recommendation now. We've been working with Pinnacle Architect many years in this, in this county. They are helping us right now with some services for this new grant for the new high school. You know, we had an earthquake two years ago. I picked up the phone and called Randy Baker with Pinnacle Architect. He had an engineer appear the next day. No charge. He's never charged us for that, okay? And so he, I, he will give us a good cost. He's been up here, he, he had a drone up here last week, so we got drone of all of our facilities. And so I just, I'd like to recommend that we maybe could retain him. So he could go ahead and get these drawings done because we've got the funds ready to go. We've got the process ready to go. Now, Mr. Carter's got it up. And, and these projects with this committee, everybody agreed on are ready to go. But we could really move much quicker if we got these engineered, engineered drawings completed as the bids were coming in.
Retaining him don't require three, three bids, you might think.
No, it doesn't, no, no, it does not. It does not require three bids. Only thing that would require three bids are these projects. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Some of the, some of the things we're looking at here is, is tennis courts, um, we, a total resurfacing of those, um, building a softball, softball indoor facility, or our ladies softball team, um, putting the winch systems for safety and to help our basketball or volleyball, pretty much P E teacher, everybody that uses the gym, they'll have the turnkeys on load, and they will have the safety features as well. Field turf at the, um, football stadium, along with a rubberized track, that will be a combination, uh, input, um, we're gonna do something with the bleachers at baseball to upgrade them, um, that one is in, still in, in the decision-making process, but new softball bleachers that are compliant, um, lights at the tennis court, middle school softball facility, um, for softball down there, and that's another thing that the engineered drawings would help, they could go ahead and set that in there, and we can figure out where that's gonna go, and we can start, start with that. Bleachers in the gym, that one would be pending, uh, Mr. Beasley's next topic, and a new gym floor in the main gym up there, because that one has been sanding for the last time, we're pretty much down to the, down to the nails, and, um, dugouts in the, in the baseball field. So those are the things that we went over, and, and like I said, we're, we're ready to move forward and, and get those, get a timeline started, and of course, we'll have to do the work out of season, in the off-season, so we'd like to hopefully get started some this summer, and, and really, in the fall, for the people that are, that are not in season, uh, really get those projects going.
Great.
Now, I'll make a motion to retain Pinnacle.
Second.
I'll contact Randy.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Do you want to hit the COVID update while you're up there? I think you were on there, no, it's okay.
I sent it out earlier this week to our boardroom to let everybody know, our, our COVID update this week, um, is in a great place, um, we have, um, five in the whole system positive, and five in the whole system quarantined, and they're quarantined from the old guidance, the new guidance started this week, so we can kind of put that to bed, and, and our, our people that test positive will be out, our people that we can confirm, have been a very close contact that we know of, will be asked to wear a mask until they get tested, or until the five days are up. So, everything's looking good in that category.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. All right, I'm, just real quick, I got one last thing, uh, as we talked about earlier, I've been, uh, talking with, uh, Randy Baker, with Pinnacle Architect, can you expand that a little bit?
Yeah.
So, as you know, the, uh, funds that we put in general assembly this year allows us to apply for a $50 million grant to build a new high school, and so, uh, I don't know, just kind of a vision that, of everything that's going on with an earthquake two years ago, the issues that we deal with constantly up there, and broken line lines, that we can't assure that happened with the earthquake, but, the tremors we keep getting, and things that fixing, and the leaky roofs, and the cracks on the outside of the buildings, and the floors that are unlevel, uh, I think we got a good chance of getting this grant. So, uh, I started the application process, met with, uh, Jim Watson, uh, coordinated with him a little bit, he's been working with me, uh, writing up some scenarios, uh, trying to meet the needs of, of our, our students and updating this, but, so I sit down with, I sat down with Pinnacle Architect, uh, we looked at some sketches, he came up last week, like, week and a half ago, excuse me, uh, brought a drawing up, and so, uh, this is kind of my vision, I don't know if you can see that real good or not, but, I'll just, I'll just talk a little bit about it, I'm trying to get over here so I'll get out of his way, can you slide that over just a little bit, Sharon, for me? Okay, that's fine. I just kind of, 'cause I want to give you an idea, kind of, watch and look at that.
Very good.
Need my glasses. There you go, all right. So, yeah, that's good, right there. So, uh, what we talked about doing is, uh, this, right here is our gym that we have, on the, on the hill right now, uh, and the classrooms, we don't want to tear it down, it's in good shape, it's in pretty good shape. Uh, we, we'll, we will need to renovate some classrooms, update the classrooms, depending on how we look at it, uh, but we're gonna keep this gym in place, everything we have here in place. If you'll notice, though, there is a bridge, walkway that comes across which is covered, that will lead into new classrooms here, okay? Of course, this is a parking lot right now, so it becomes a little smaller, still have about ninety spaces of parking there, uh, this will be the new front entrance, right there, uh, goes into a nice corridor, I don't know if you guys have been to Mennery High School, uh, they've got an area there, kind of goes in, so that's what you would open up into, be real secure, before you can get into the offices. Most of the offices, guidance, data, principal, sister principal, all their offices would be here in the front office, so parents have easy access when they come in, they need to see a guidance counselor, they need to see a social worker, they need to see the principal, sister principal, everyone will be in these offices right here. Don't know what these classrooms are gonna look like yet, we ain't even got that far in the planning stage, uh, we've just put some sketches together. Again, over here is the new, new parking lot for the gym, this is actually a gym, it's a nice, large gym that will accommodate boys locker rooms, girls locker rooms, workout area, uh, nice, huge lobby that feeds right into the gym out of this parking lot, so. This is the old gym we have right here, okay? We're gonna go in there and renovate that one, we're gonna put in the new bleachers, if, if we, all this happens, we're gonna put in the new floor, we're going downstairs in the locker room, and we're gonna update those locker rooms as well, so we'd have three gyms that would accommodate Algonia High School, uh, all of our kids from the K A schools, our community, just be a resource for all of those. Of course, right now, you don't have all of our welding, and ag, and construction, and all that over there, so all that will be torn down, and this is a new career and technical education center that's built off the backside of this gym right here, and it would house our electrical trains, we could get that in place, our construction, uh, three-bay garage for the automotive parts, so it'd be a new welding lab in there, it would be new, uh, foods and nutrition labs put in there, all, it would house all of our CTE programs in there, which wouldn't be scattered in this building, and that building, and that building. Of course, the barn's still there, you know, here's the softball field, tennis courts, Davis Field, uh, none of that changes, so, uh, it's kind of a phase thing, you know, uh, this would be the original starting point, uh, on the backside of this, where the students, if they want to park over here and come in, uh, would feed through the cafeteria, new cafeteria over there, okay? So, really, all of, only thing that, only thing that would stay is the, uh, gym we have now, and the classrooms and gym we have right there, and as this is built, and we got to this point, and got students in there, then we would tear down certain areas of that, and so, uh, you know, displaced the people at times, but, um, just kind of a, it'd be a phase two, phase three kind of thing, but, uh, they think it'd be a three-year project, if we get going on, so, uh, I'm excited about it, um, we, we, I'm waiting, we, we, we sent off the, uh, application that was put together to Mr. Watson, Dr. Watson, and he's reviewing it, he's gonna get back with me this week, and, uh, if you guys are wanting to move forward with his application, I just need an okay, and your signature on it, Ms. Ray, when, uh, when we get it, when we, when we get it where we want it to, and then I'm going to the commissioners, and I don't need any funds from them, there's no matching funds from the commissioners, this is zero match around any county, our county and a couple of the counties isn't, is, is no match, uh, I hope that doesn't hurt us in the application process, that the commissioners would not put forward any funds, it may, it may not, I don't know that, but, uh, but I, I do need their, we do need their approval to move forward with the signature with the chairman, that's really all we need from them, so, but, uh, once, once I get the application finished, and how we want it to read, and how it looks, I'll, I'll go, I'll go to the commissioner's meeting, and I'll let you guys know the night I'm going, and if you could be there, that would, that probably might help a little bit, so.
Could you just, one more time?
Okay.
Show me that CTE building.
All right, it's, it's, it's over here?
It's, it's, but it's.
Yeah, so, it's kind of hard to see, yeah.
I'm looking, are those cars?
Those are cars, yeah, so, you know, this right now is the road that comes up to the backside, when you get here right now, you have this wooden building that stores a lot of those.
We're not seeing the building.
You're not seeing the building, all eyes.
You can see it, I saw it a little better, she could go there.
Yeah, it's, it's all been torn down, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, all of that's torn down, parking's put there, for basketball games, volleyball games, with.
You know, the idea of the CTE was so wonderful.
Yes, yes.
Remember your talk?
Yeah, yeah, but, this building, once you come in this building, you're enclosed inside building, there's, you don't have to go outside anywhere to get to a classroom.
Is there really, like, saving the lobby? I love the lobby, it's just, no. So I said I.
If you would like the lobby, we'll chop it up and.
Like, I can't seem to move to the next generation, and obviously, even with clothing.
We gotta get to it first, yeah, we're moving, we're moving.
That's where we had a lot of our problems.
Yeah.
The ceiling is sun.
The ceiling is dark, the floors you can't wax, uh, it's, uh.
Well, save me a brick.
We say, hey, we, we'll take one of those columns out, it's got the rock around the bottom of it, you know, it's, no, it's, I'm, I'm just kidding.
I know, but you know, when you've been there, it's old memories.
And I, I've been in a school system where we, we tore down a whole building.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, they actually saved a lot of the bricks, and people bought bricks, and actually made walkways, if you bought one, and you put your name and your child's name on there, if they graduated from there, if you graduated, so. Yeah, so, I mean, we, we can do some things like that.
Sure.
Because if, you know, if that wasn't wrapped in metal, the bricks would be falling off of it, you know, so.
I know, but I'm a, I'm a saver, so I'm always like, oh, you know, this.
But we, but we could do something.
Okay, I like that idea.
But, I don't know, y'all kind of like that design, we're kind of up there.
It's great, it's beautiful.
Now, they, I do have one picture out, I don't put it up, but they, they, they sent us one with a slow metal roof on it, and they sent one with a flat, flat roof, and I was like, we don't want.
We don't want flat roof.
I know, that's why I told them, but, so.
So what do you, you need, uh, what do you need to, how do you go on? Do you need a recommendation?
I don't need it, well, I mean, we, we can, I mean, it's, if you, I, I think y'all have been saying, go, 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 I've been going, 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 yeah, you know, I, I, I want to get this application finalized, uh, and, uh, let me get it finalized, it, it's, it has to be submitted by March fifteenth, so, you know, we're not cutting close, but, you know, I've gotta get, I want to get it finished, could present this to the commissioners, or even have a talk with them, or if we have to, maybe their facilities group and a couple of you can meet, and, and we have, Bill can join us, get his signature on it, so.
Great.
You want, you want to make a, make a nomination to proceed with this process?
Let's do that.
So moved.
Good.
Second.
Second.
I'll keep you updated as we move forward.
Thank you.
And I think that's all my report, I'm sorry, but, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm excited about this opportunity for us, so, I'm gonna call Ms. Holder in, and turn it over to Ms. Holder for the new business.
First thing on the business is our presentation of 2021 audit and financial statements, and we received an unqualified, which is a claim audit opinion, which is what you have, is what you want, and we have two folks here, Mr. Jonas Lattengewell, and Mr. Rick Adams from our audit firm, that are gonna go into detail.
Well, you've heard a lot of good things tonight, you have a lot going on here, and I think it's real, and we have a good report to, to add to it. What I'm gonna do is, uh, just mention, you have a letter in there that you just read, we didn't get some time, uh, there are no, there are no bindings, no problems, nothing special mentioned in here, just normal, uh, procedures. The report is fairly large, but I encourage everybody to, when you get time, and you can't look through it, read through it, uh, a lot of good information in here. What we're gonna do, and we're not gonna go with the old report, Rick's gonna go over some highlights for you, and, uh, that will be, uh, the major points in the report, and then we can answer any questions you might be asking.
Uh, we did do a compliance audit, I'll mention that first, of the federal state grants that you had, you had it accounted for, everything was clear of that, and the report, uh, the city mentioned had been sent to L G C and approved by them, so, um, they didn't have any issues with anything in the report. And I was gonna just go over this highlight, I think it's up there, and you might have a copy too, for yourself, I'm not sure, but, um, it's similar to what I've gone over in prior years, um, the first part is your local fund, and your section eight, your special revenue fund, which is local funds also, um, and you can see there's a 2021 column for the amount from the audit we're talking about this year, and then last year's in 2020, and then there's a change column there to, uh, very interesting, see, uh, of the increases or decreases. So the first amount there is your cash and investments in your local fund, uh, you have $3,369,797 in cash and investments at the end of June, and you got total assets of just under $5 million in those two funds. As far as liabilities, most of that, this was salaries and payroll and stuff, our payroll taxes payable, that was about 1.6 million, so when you take your assets, plus your liability, that gives you your fund balance, and this number that's shown here, 3.394, that's your total fund balance, that's assigned and undesigned fund balance, so not all this fund balance is available, I think about 1.2 million was available to be used at the end of June. As far as revenues, you had, uh, taken in revenues of $3,518,022, and your expenditures for the year, and those two funds was $3,242,011, so you had an increase in your fund balances in those funds of $276,011. The next section is your school food service program amounts, total assets at the end of June, and, and the school food service was $228,208. The deferred inflows, this relates to the pension liability number, so, I mean, it doesn't, it changed a little bit during the years, $127,920, and then you have liabilities, including the pension, uh, for the school food service, was $711,956, and then the inflows, the deferred inflows, again, this relates to the pension actuarial information we give, we have to report that, uh, and the school food service, their part was $232,586, so your net assets was a negative $588,414, and again, most of that is due to the pension liability that's required to be reported for that particular fund. Operating revenues was just over $80,000, and your operating expense, uh, was $717,321, so you have an operating loss at the end of the year was $637,167, and that loss is before your school food service grant that you get from the government, that goes under non-operating revenues, so you can see that number was $571,080, so you had a slight loss in your school food service for the year of just over $66,000. And the last part is your, uh, total for all the funds of the school board, uh, combined, you had cash and investments of $3,758,081, your total assets, including your fixed assets, all your buildings, equipment and such, net depreciation, the total assets for the year was $22,763,993, and then your net assets was, uh, negative 5.963, and again, that's caused by your pension liability amount that's required to be reported for the, on the full accrual basis, so you can see last year was about 6.6 million, or 6.8 million, so you actually had a decrease this year in your, in your deficit, uh, that was basically the change in the pension liability amount for the year, so. I mean, I know it's real quick over here, I'm sure, um, somebody might ask some questions, or one of the reports might ask some questions, that you might want to ask later.
Was that food service, was that comparable to what, we have that new program?
Mm-hmm.
So how, how does that compare to the past years?
Well, I mean, that, you can see that, the operating loss...
What did you want here?
I'm on the, I'm on the, I'm still on the highlight sheet.
Oh, okay.
The operating loss last year was about $760,000. This year was 637,000.
So we improved to 123,000.
You told us that, you said that.
Well, that's what it's supposed to do. And that's what's, that's what's in the contract, you know. We haven't got out of the hole yet, but, but we, it's, it's much better, it's much better than it was.
And this year, I think, the year of the audit, I think most of the kids were on pre-reduce lunches just because of the COVID issues and stuff like that. It's not a normal year.
It wasn't normal.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions?
We, we appreciate it.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Enjoy working up here. And we have a great operation up here. And we're gonna excuse ourselves and let you carry on with the rest of the meeting now.
Thank you, guys, for coming. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
The, the next item on the new business is a presentation of the 2122 audit contract, which will be here before we matter. So that's, it'll be effective, that's on June 30th. And hopefully you have your highlight sheet and packet that kind of explains the process that we feel is feasible to continue with.
We need to, we need to, we need to do, I had to make it there first, so, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, no.
I'm all right.
I thought you, I thought, I thought you, that's what you were doing, was going to you first, okay. All right.
Okay, if there are no questions, I need a motion to approve the audit report and financial statements for the fiscal year of 2020 and 2021.
Still do.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Thank you.
Now, to the 2122 audit contract. We have, we've been with Lattimore Church for a number of years, and they, they do good service for us. And the reasons, I think it's reasonable to stay with them. It's not like we have any festive interest in each other. We each keep our distance and do our own thing. The last time we actually did our audit out, which you're not required to do, we sent out like two dozen letters and we got three responses. And there's not, a lot of, a lot of CPA firms can't do general audits because you have to have a special type of certification to do them. You have to have a special CE from yellow book audit to do that type of work. And they have to have a peer review every, like I said, for three years to say that they are doing the job they should. And their latest peer review letter is in here as well. The fee is just a very minimal increase over last year, like a couple, a couple hundred bucks, which is not much at all. And that's driving a lot of trouble expenses. They're from out in Oregon. So I, I think they did, I think they did a good job for us.
We need a motion to approve the audit contract for fiscal year 2021 and 2022.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holder. All right, on item C, Chairman, pull up the school calendar. It's that time of year we need to... So we came up with two options for the 2022, 2023 school year. We've got feedback from all the principals, all the teachers, schools, everyone agreed on option one. There is one, there is one change we need to make on it that I was notified of today. And, and so on the January, we have three annual leave days there, the first week of January. And then during our spring, spring break that we always put in each year, we have, we start out Monday with an optional day. So what we like to do is the fifth and sixth of January, make those optional days and move that annual leave day down to spring, spring break. And that way, folks wouldn't have to come in or choose to take a, take an optional day that way, if that's okay. But option two is, is fairly similar to this, but option two is exams after Christmas. And so, just to give you an idea, with the calendar law that the General Assembly has this year, we cannot start any earlier than the closest Monday to August 22nd. Well, August 22nd this year falls on Monday, so that's as early as we can start this year. Well, for next school year, I'm sorry. So that, August 22nd would actually be the first day of school. That's option two. Can you go back to option one for me?
The 22nd would be the week before?
Yes.
22nd.
The closest Monday to that would be the week before?
No.
22nd is the month.
The closest Monday would be the week before. Close the week after would be eight days. I know that's what I, in your mind, I know that, but, yeah, we couldn't, we can't get away with that. You don't blame them. No, I'm good. No, I know, but, no, but now we do have, we, some of the teachers, we moved, we moved quite a few of the optional days at the end to the beginning. But that's mainly because we, and Ms. Weaver will give y'all, I think she's gonna present to you next month, about the letters training that's getting ready to start, statewide initiative that we have to do. And so we need those days at the beginning, the optional days. And then if we have summer school, which we normally do at the end of school year, option one next year, our teachers could finish up at, on, on June the 2nd. We could actually start summer school on June the 5th and, and hopefully finish it before July when it's hard to find people who want to work during then, and kids are on vacation and their staff are taking vacations. So, but our, our proposal is, is option one, and that's, that's, that's... How many day calendars? It's, uh, well, you have to have 215 working days. It's the same calendar we have right now. It's 168 day calendar.
Okay. And what's the start time on school, is it the same as it is now?
That's what we have planned right now.
Okay.
Would you like to see a change in that?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay.
I was, I was just asked the other day, they thought that high school was starting at 7:45. I was just making sure.
I haven't heard that. I mean, that's not been discussed. It's on the paper.
It is.
Okay, I think Mr. Stargell is, is gonna adjust the, the remediation period.
Oh, okay, that's, yeah, it's not, the schools aren't actually starting.
School actually starts 7:45 all the time.
Right, right.
Just the first 30 minutes, so it's that remediation period. So I think he's gonna move that, 7:45 to start the first period, and he's putting that in somewhere.
Yeah, the remediation he wants to put in... First and second.
The only concern I had, though, was the, the traffic. It, you know, I think that's why we moved it to begin with.
Yeah, the pre, the pre-k is set 55.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I know, I, it just, it's very crowded with parents. I, I think that's why we moved it to begin with. Is that right?
Yeah. Well, that, that, that...
I mean, we had the Trojan breakfast.
The Trojan breakfast. And see, that's, that's what he's talking about right now, Mr. Carr's talking about. So for, to keep Trojan breakfast, which, with their NTSS programs that are going on.
Right.
And the need for those programs. So schools start at 7:45 and like, on Monday, first period is when they'll do interventions, you know. Between first and second, or whatever. Yeah, they're gonna have, yeah, yeah, it's gonna be, Trojan breakfast will be in between like first and second period.
Okay.
Instead of the first 30 minutes of school. And he thinks he'll get a, he just thinks it'll, he just thinks it'll benefit kids more. It'll benefit our students. They'll be there. They'll be there.
We researched it, because a lot of schools are trying to figure out the best time to do this. They'll try the end of the day, the middle of the day, the beginning of the day. And what seems to be evidence-based best practice is probably first and second.
They're there.
They're kinda tracked.
You can bound mandatory, mandatory.
They have to be there first, they kinda have to be there second.
But I am with thinking with what the traffic's gonna be right here, is it will be eight days.
Just because I remember from the first few days of August this year, it was, it was an issue.
But we could bump, you know, the pre-k, we could bump up to 8 o'clock. That gives us a 15-minute window. We could go from, we could go, we could go from, from 8 to 3 instead of 7:55, 2:55. I mean, that, I don't, I mean, I don't think there'd be any problems with that.
Right.
You know, the buses, you know, we do share a couple of buses between the high school and...
The buses are usually early.
Yeah.
And gone by the end of the...
And this option one, about the exams at the high school?
Big before.
They would be before Christmas.
Before.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That's gotta happen.
Yeah, that needs to happen.
Yeah. So I, I'd like to propose that with the adjustments to January 5th and 6th becoming optional days, and April the 3rd becoming an annual leave day, and also moving the beginning school at K8s from 8 o'clock to 3 o'clock. On option one is my proposal. And so if...
Make a motion to approve option one. Is Dr. Beasley staying?
How many work days are at the end? Slide it up there, Sharon. Because we got a massive, I mean, we got a massive amount this time. Got a massive amount this time, but, so, at, at one time, we didn't have any at the end. And so we had to keep moving to graduation and then in the school year. And so we put them in at the end of the year for snow days. Right. Well, then we all of a sudden got remote days. And so, but I... So we don't have a massive amount this time? No, we put them in the front because we need them in the front because of the letters training. So, yeah, you can see up there, we have five optional days there. We got two required days, but teachers are there then, but we've only, we only have five optional days at the end. So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Thank you. You all right? So, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll turn old business over to you on the face covering guidance. And then I'll, I talked to Fred today, so I'll let you guys know about B there.
Okay. Old business, face covering guidance discussion?
Leave it like it is.
I make a motion to approve option one.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So I, I did talk to Mr. Johnson, the board attorney. Now, he said, if you want to, you can table this again. We still haven't done a second reading on the policies A there and policy B. And I don't know if you've had a chance to read the 5210 distribution and display of non-school material. But Mr. Johnson's recommendation was number four, but you guys can choose any option you want to. But that, that was, that was his recommendation if you wanted to proceed. We still have a final reading. Yeah, we still, we still have to do the second reading on those. We don't even, we haven't even done the second reading on those. Okay. Okay. So if we approve him, it might be the second reading approved. Yes. Then it'll be the final. And it'll be final next time, yes.
Okay, final for next time.
Yes, yeah. I make a motion.
Very important, very important.
Yeah, I mean, we need to... I make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second?
Wait a minute, we need to, first, we need to, we need to, which option you guys would like to choose? I'm gonna go with four for right now, with what he's sticking with. Okay.
It's four that was restrictive and most, I'm Mr. It's restrictive.
It's restrictive.
Yep.
But it's, but number four is the closest to what we have right now in place.
Yes.
Still allows our Girl Scouts to contribute.
I was gonna have it, I thought I had it right.
It, you know, organizations...
I'll do.
So it's closer to what we're doing right here?
Yes, ma'am.
That's right.
Yeah. God, would you like for me to read, do you, can read it to you?
It's pretty big.
Yeah, well, I'm, no, I'm talking about option four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You got it.
Yeah, option four, this option is identical to option three above, except that in item four of this option, the board specifically creates in high schools only a neutral equal access provision for display and distribution of other literature not otherwise permitted. In item number three, as noted above in the Fourth Circuit case, PEC versus Upsher, the court permitted bibles to be made available to high school students from a display table subject to various restrictions, but indicated that this practice was not constitutionally permissible in elementary schools. Option four is designed to structure a policy that permits practices above, approved in PEC without going beyond what is permitted in PEC. So...
Basically what we're doing now.
Basically what we're doing right now, right, yeah. Okay. We just can't physically hand the bibles out, but we can put them on a display table, and those who would like to get them, if we have an organization that do that, they'll be allowed to do that. Okay. So we'll, we'll need a motion to choose an option, and then if we can have a motion to approve the second reading.
Okay, I still need the second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
And then, like, need a motion to approve the second reading of the Fall PLSA update.
I need a motion to approve the second reading of the Fall PLSA update.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
And then, I'd like, need a motion to approve the second reading of the Fall PLSA update.
I need a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion.
Second?
Aye, second.
All those in favor?